Are we ready? Hello there.
Thanks.
I'd like to call Minnie to order.
Scott and Janice.
Thank you, buddy. Scott. Janice. Okay, let's take a look at these minutes.
It's like in class when the teacher handed out assignments, all the kids got quiet.
Yeah.
It's easier to cheat that way if you're just quiet.
Well, you know what? They spent money buying them bowls and plates and whatever else in there, so you might as well use them because they're there.
We may have a big function or something, more of a man.
He can buy you more.
Have to buy you more.
Bless your heart.
He's right, done all over his taxes, don't he? You think she's doing it out of kindness of his heart?
It's the Republican way.
He's got your 501(c)(3) number. Kathy, would you like a piece?
No, thank you. Please, honey.
You guys hear about the guy, the guy killed tonight on Seventy?
I heard that Seventy was shut down both directions for a while.
What's happened?
Guy in a white truck flipped, wasn't wearing his seatbelt, and didn't quite make it.
Ejected.
Not wearing his seatbelt.
You don't have to have a truck, is what people think.
Huh?
I said that's what people think, you don't have to have a truck.
I guess.
For years you didn't.
Yeah, for years you didn't, but Fendy proved that wrong. You want to stay inside the vehicle when it rolls, because it rode four times.
So it don't roll on you.
Mm-hmm.
He was ejected.
Only my seatbelt.
I've got coffee drops if you need them.
I have some, thank you.
She's probably at...
We go now.
Can't believe that I just sent you, that is freaking genius. Hold on, who that guy is that made that? He got a, yeah, some sponsorship.
Ever got any questions about the minutes from last month's meeting? Sure you do, Scott, you weren't here, what you got?
Do you have any idea when the mannequins are gonna be here?
They're here.
They're here.
They're here.
Oh, if somebody was here last month. Yeah.
I wouldn't allow them to be here last month.
They got two babies and two adults.
And two AEDs.
And two trainer AEDs, and we just went and got batteries for them. You'll get a bill in there for the batteries from, what's that hardware store, the hardware, Needles? Never hardware stores.
Needles, oh, True Value.
True Value, that was called, True Value?
Ace.
Ace. Ace is the place where you help a hardware man.
I wonder if they got batteries for it, had to put on a credit card. They won't let me charge there, so I said, okay, I'll put it on this then.
We got a charge card.
The charge card works, but the charge, you can't charge it to the town.
You gotta, you gotta...
They want pre-authorization.
Yeah, they want to call a board member every time, so I said...
That's what they do, and they can normally call me, that's why I got a cellphone.
Yeah, they call him.
It's, I can charge at Menards, but I can't charge there, so go figure.
But they're the only ones that call, and we went, what, five years ago? When the spending got a little out of hand, is when we brought that up, they need to call a board member.
Well, and that was applied to Wayne's.
I know.
Supplies, or whatever it's called.
But anyways, I got batteries for the mannequins.
Okay, the first thing here talks about... Do what?
And a bunch of Milwaukee tools.
The first paragraph there talks about the building permits. Tomorrow, Steve Soros is gonna meet, meet me over here tomorrow at 1:30.
Steve who?
Soros.
Soros.
Soros. Soros. Soros. S-R-A-S.
I don't know who that is.
He is the permit, or the building inspector for Wayne County.
Okay, I thought that was Hickelbottom.
He's over there.
He's like, he, he like, yeah, he, he wouldn't be doing this kind of stuff.
No, no.
Oh, he's the boss.
Yeah, Steve would be doing that.
He's over there. Excuse me.
So we are working that. I don't know if Ron Cross has got that agreement done or not, I'm hoping he does. But anyway, that's that, and then down here. So it says, Greens Fork entered a five-year contract with Best Way Disposal for Trash Pickup in the town of Greens Fork. Now, we've been having some residents on Facebook, or Growing Up Greens Fork, that are just so unhappy because they have to, they say on there that you have to call if you have an item to be picked up, not that they will come by like they said they would the first Wednesday of the month.
I called today. Yeah, I was gonna say, we don't know what's true yet.
Okay, I called today to verify what I had been told earlier. Earlier, I was told that they descended a large truck, it's a different truck, the first Wednesday of every month, and they are going to do that regardless of where anybody calls or not.
Okay, so you don't have to call.
No.
So, really, what would be nice is these good residents that we have that like to put it on Facebook, they'll come to a meeting and we can give them this straight up, and then they can be the informants of their neighbors. Enough said about that.
Well, one more thing, when somebody complains about it, I said, I don't see any other way that council could have went but with Best Way, because their five-year amount is real close to what Rumpke's three-year charge was gonna be. I said, I don't think council had a choice, they had to go with Best Way.
And the other thing that was posted is that he had paid for two extra dumpsters, and they only emptied one.
Well, my thing is, if you have an issue with the way it's been done, call Best Way.
Right.
Speak with them. He has said they've got seven or eight operators that are there just for that reason, and might have been 12.
You're talking about Mr. Ramsey, and he figured out the issue. He does have to...
I think some people are getting it figured out, but I've heard people say, well, I had three from Rumpke that I bought, and Rumpke don't sell dumpsters, they run them, just like Best Way does, so. It all worked out fine, and people will get used to it, or they won't.
Well, and I actually saw, right directly east of me, someone's trash was overflowing and the lid wouldn't close, and so they had taken the top, the homeowner had taken the top bag out and set it on the ground. Guy got out of the truck and got that bag plus emptied the other.
They, he said that they would do that early on, but they will not, will not continue to do it, that's what...
You're in a transition.
Transition period.
Right, a transition period. I, I think they're wanting our business, they've got our business for the next five years. I'm gonna look at the camera and say, five years, people, to deal with it.
But it is a safer way to go, I mean, if we stick with Rumpke, and I don't think a lot of people understand this, is they've got that clause in that contract, well, if their costs go up, then they're gonna come back to renegotiate for already higher rate that they've already presented, and when I looked it up, one town this happened to, their rate tripled. Tripled. So, I mean, people need to understand that...
That's the only way you could go.
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna take the fixed rate that's already lower versus a variable rate that's gonna go higher no matter what.
Right.
I can't remember what the figure was that we came up with last month of how much we are eating every month and paying over, I think it was 300 and...
Three, four hundred dollars, it varies from one month to the next, and sometimes it's more than that.
I don't think that's right, I can't remember.
Some is, it varies each month.
But what, how many, how many get picked up? How many units?
I'd say it's varying every month, it should be the same amount of people every month.
Yeah. Okay, some people don't pay, they let it go two, three months, and when they do that and they pay, then I break it down, and I have to charge it to trash first.
They still get picked up whether they pay or not?
Yeah.
So how many units are, is...
Two eighteen.
Two eighteen.
No, no, I'm sorry, a hundred and eighty trash, and so, a hundred and eighty.
Please, buddy.
It's a four, not a fourteen.
Here, I have a, I have a spare pin.
Oh, good, thank you.
And our customers are paying seven...
Ten dollars.
Ten dollars, and we are right now being charged thirteen, fourteen something.
Fourteen even.
So four times however many, one eighty is...
That's seven hundred and twenty a month we're eating.
Well, the remedy is to raise it directly for your trash.
Yeah, that's seven hundred and twenty a month.
Yeah, don't solve the whole thing, because you have people who don't pay if their sewer goes to...
You can't base your business model on the people that don't pay, you gotta, you gotta, you can't...
The people that don't pay, and it goes to the sewer.
Well, the thing in this business here is you, you can't, and we won't, or wouldn't, even if we could, charge the people that pay, that are good about paying more to cover for the wood, don't they?
Oh, no, we would never do that.
But no, but what I'm saying is that if everyone pays, you're still short, because you're still eating four dollars per person.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, that alone is, like I said...
Seven hundred and twenty dollars.
Right.
Seven hundred and twenty a month.
Plus whatever people don't pay, who supposed to pay don't pay, so you gotta be eating a lot every month.
I guess what I'm getting at is, before we get caught here and do take an increase or get really backed into a corner, we need to think about raising this rate.
All it takes is a motion to do that.
I make a motion that we raise the trash rate, we've got to do it.
Do I have a second?
I don't think we have any choice.
We can...
I don't know how much we should raise it.
We can make the motion to raise it, and then come up with an amount.
I would second that, because we'd have to look at, figure out what that would have to be, everything.
Even if you charge fourteen dollars, you still want to have to feed it some for the people that sort of know that.
But the thing, one thing about an issue, we should be feeding it less.
Yeah, you'd be feeding it less if you've already done the fourteen.
I mean, people ought to understand too, though, if we had stuck with Rumpke, this rate increase would be higher.
It would have been fifteen, beginning one January, yeah.
Because...
And we do have copies of the, uh, the...
Bids.
Contracts, yeah, the bids, on hand, if somebody would like to look at them, they're welcome to.
So we have one year, and what's it raised to next year? I don't have a copy of that.
Five percent. Five percent a year.
I think Bud's got a copy here somewhere.
Or in my filing cabinet, there, maybe.
One lady came in, was talking about the other day, and I just showed her what we get charged a month for, she said, huh? She couldn't believe it.
Well, they also need to read that bold print and understand that, you know, that's, that could come back to bite you. There, you don't have that in the other contract. And here's the thing too, they don't understand, well, we renegotiate, right?
I've never seen it.
Well, then they can say, then maybe we go to Best Way then, but Best Way may not be available then, if we don't take them up then, you may be stuck with Rumpke, and they have to pay triple.
Where you going?
Because you gotta have trash payment.
We found it.
You got both of them.
We found it.
Well, I'm sure probably do, then I have one.
You guys are very, very frugal when it comes to the town's money, I've never seen any town do that like you guys do. You guys are very, very cautious about the money you guys spend, but...
We have to be.
But...
There's not much...
But, I mean, the state would tell you, you get a charge when it costs you.
I'm just wondering what we should raise it.
You should be in a hole for utility.
See, here, January one, fourteen, January one, fifteen.
Then they started passing on seven dollars for forty-two cents, and then they raised it up to ten.
That would be popular, popular strategy.
Three years would be fifteen, and this is all if we don't take an increase because of the economy.
Well, we won't on Best Way.
Oh, yeah, they said that we could, that they could raise it.
No, no.
No, not Best Way.
Best Way, you're locked in.
Best Way's locked in, that's, that's...
Totally locked in with them.
Five years.
That was my, that was the reason I, that was my reason for voting that way, was because it was a locked-in rate, because I specifically asked them, Rumpke's not gonna get rid of that clause in their contract.
Right.
And that could come back to bite us, like I said, that's what, when I looked it up, they did it to a town in Ohio and tripled the rate in a month. And that could happen, us, we got lucky, it didn't happen to us last time.
Right.
But they, they have that, where they can do it, and like I said, if something like that happens, they come back to renegotiate, we may not be in a position where there's any other companies that could take us on, and we may have to sit there and say, okay, you're gonna triple rate, we're gonna have to go with you, because there's nobody else can do it. Best Way is available now, but they may not have been available later.
That's right.
And then people, I guarantee people would complain if they sit there and they get their bill, and it's like, wait a minute, it's not like ninety bucks, now it's a hundred and fifty. And they're like, well, that's because you guys wanted to stick with the one with the clause in the contract.
Well, if you take an overall picture of this and say four dollars, we raised it four dollars. Four dollars times twelve, that's, that's pretty darn good.
Forty-eight dollars a year.
That's, that's pretty darn good.
But, but you know, what you could do is to, you know, is that you can just do like a dollar a year for the next four years. There you go.
That doesn't really help the town that much.
But, uh, it's gonna be a dollar a year for her out, it's gonna be a hundred and eighty dollars a month, times twelve, and then going up every year, or raise it two dollars, where you don't have to do it all four dollars at once.
What do you pay at Carthage?
I don't know, I pay like, I don't know, around two hundred dollars a month for water, sewer, and trash. When I moved to Carthage, it was like thirty-five dollars for everything, and when I got into town council, we jacked the rate up about four times the cost now, so it...
And I bet the people watching TV now are glad you're not only town council here.
Well, but the bottom line is, when, when the state mandates that you have a sewer rate and a water rate that pays your utilities, that's what you gotta do.
Oh, yeah.
So it's...
Well, you remember what Rumpke charges outside the city limits here?
You can't do it for fifteen, fourteen dollars a month?
I paid ninety-nine dollars in something for three months, and you pay in advance, when I lived outside the city limits, right up here.
So I said, you guys are real, real cheap as far as on stuff that you got done.
We try, we try to think about the people best we can, but sometimes it's just hard.
But like I said, the four dollars straight up is not that bad, not that bad at all, when you consider that's only a forty-eight dollar raise per year, for a household.
It's like, when you have people that aren't paying it at ten dollars a month.
That's not gonna change, if people pay ten, they're gonna pay it at fourteen, because they want their trash picked up.
And we do have the opportunity, and it's been set in place, but we don't do it that often, is that trash can be sent over to the collection agency.
We didn't, it didn't, I mean, it was a...
Yeah, didn't cost us anything, though. Was there a lot of time involved?
Yes.
And the way that works with the collection, with the collection agency, just because you file to have them collect money for you, you're gonna get in line behind whoever else filed first.
I mean, how many people do you have who are consistently late?
Or don't pay, we've got, what, four that never pay?
Well, they pay eventually, because, how they pay their sewer bill?
It goes to sewer liens, and then you, you don't get any trash money. The only time you would get it would be if the property is sold, and the new owner...
Then, then what you do?
Once you tie the trash to the sewer bill, and that way they don't have a choice but to pay it.
It is tied to the sewer.
You can not lean trash, you can lean sewer.
But you can start charging an extra twenty dollars a month for these people who are, who are on their, a fee to the town, that's gotta be looked at, because you guys shouldn't be paying Nita all them hours to, to go after all this stuff and eat that for the people who don't give a crap and don't pay their bill anyways. I say hit them as hard as you can, and then, there you go. Oh, you don't want to pay their trash? No big deal.
Just gonna like to sue.
Well, they're...
They wouldn't care, they'd fill the garage up with poop and five-dollar fart.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, it's happening. But that's, four dollars would save the town yearly eight thousand six hundred and forty dollars, and that's...
We could put that towards the roads.
Yeah, and we're already got people complaining about water, or what...
For pumps.
How bad a shape it's in.
There's other streets bad too.
Yeah.
It's just hard to stay on top of them with the amount of money that we could get to use when it's warm enough to use it.
Well, what we use for fixing the sewer and the roads underneath the sewer is what's really set us back. But nothing we can do about it. Well, anyway, I made the motion, and Scott seconded it. We definitely need to raise the trash rate.
Okay, are you gonna make a motion for the minutes first?
Yeah, no, we don't have to do that first, but we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna do it right after this. A motion been made, properly seconded, to discuss what we need to do, and we are going to raise the trash rates.
And you don't know at this time what?
No, we don't know at this time, something that we'll discuss, and...
Well, do we want to discuss it right now, buddy?
Well, if you do, let's go ahead and, let me do this one first, and then we will talk about how, we'll make the motion that we're going to raise the trash, and then after we approve this minutes, then we'll talk about how much we're gonna raise it. So, motion, I need to, I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes from last month's meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion been made and properly seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say the same. Great. Now, there is a, uh, we can go ahead and talk about now, being the minutes from then. All right, I'm gonna open the floor to the board members.
I say we raise it the full four dollars, because the overall, times twelve, is only forty-eight a year. I think that's, that's great, that's just nothing. I mean, a raise is a raise, and no matter how we do it, they're still gonna complain, but the savings for the town, we need right now, because we're gonna eat the seven twenty a month if we don't do it. You can cut that in half at two dollars, make it three sixty, but...
Three sixty, and Rick had brought up something earlier, he talked about a year, a dollar a year, but I, I think we could do, maybe, and this, we're just throwing these out, two, then one and one. Or actually, because we're gonna be going over five years, so we could do two, one, one, and one.
You're not gonna see much if you raise it two dollars.
Do what?
You're not gonna see much coming in a month.
Yeah, it is, everyone, everyone who pays is gonna pay two extra dollars.
Everybody that pays.
Okay, who, you got a hundred...
That's only three hundred and sixty a year.
Yeah.
I mean, a month.
Right, right, so even if, if the, if the people who pay now, they're gonna keep paying, that, it is what it is, because you don't, if you're not, if you're not gonna go after the people who don't pay, if you're not gonna give them some sort of penalty, then they're not gonna pay it, so...
I just hate the thought of a forty percent increase, I really do. But I can see twenty percent, then ten, ten, or whatever, ten, 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 or whatever it would be. That's just my, uh, we haven't got a motion.
She made a motion to raise it to four dollars.
I...
Nobody seconded it, we're just talking about it.
No, nobody seconded it, I, I thought she wanted to change that.
No, no, I think we need to raise it to four dollars.
That's okay, yeah.
And like I said, that's...
What do you think, Scott?
Well, we're gonna bleed no matter how we do it.
Y'all wanna have that?
Yeah, we're just trying to put the turner on and slow it down a little bit.
The town is still gonna be eating three sixty a month if we only raise it two.
Okay, I got a question then, like, when he was suggesting the two, one, 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 is that, is that really gonna do anything, though? I mean, as far as our financial situation? Because isn't it going, it's going up each year.
Right.
You're chasing it.
Going up five percent each year.
Are you gonna...
Let me, let me read this to you.
So you're saying in three years, raise it four dollars? Or in three years, raise it five dollars? And we are at what, in three years?
Fifteen dollars and fourteen cents, that means...
So we eat fourteen cents a month? Per hour, fourteen cents per house.
But you're closing the gap, though, you guys are being responsible in closing the gap, with, with the least impact as you can.
But you said earlier, you're supposed to take in what goes out, or utilities take in.
If it was me calling the shots, yeah, it'd be four, it'd be raising to whatever costs Rumpke zero, there's no, there's no, there's no buffer, whatever the cost is, but that's four dollars, and that's, as Buddy said, that's a, what, we just say forty percent?
That's a forty percent increase, whatever you're paying now.
I think going two, one, one, one makes sense, so...
I, I work, I got a job, I can afford it, I don't have an issue with it, but I, you gotta try to think of the people that... I know fifty dollars a year doesn't seem like a lot, but if you're on a fixed income, and let's say nine hundred and twelve dollars a month, social security, which a lot of people are, and that's all they have, and houses in Greens Fork are rented for seven hundred to fifteen hundred a month, that's something to think about.
Then they can order shit down their damn porch.
That's what I'm trying to look at.
Yeah, some of the owners pay that.
It doesn't matter whether you put a Band-Aid on it, or rip it off, it doesn't matter how you do it, it's, they're gonna complain.
Right.
It just doesn't matter. You can cut your seven twenty a month in half to three sixty by doing it the first year.
And then, and then next year, you'll catch up, and then the third year, you'll be about...
I really, I really don't care, but me personally, I'd rather take the four dollar increase and pay it.
Still going up in years four and five too, though, right?
Yeah.
No.
Oh, four, yes, yeah, it goes up, Bud.
Right, it goes up, and I thought you meant, are we going, no.
That's what I'm saying, is it gonna, so we're not, we're gonna start losing again.
Fourteen cents a month.
Two, one, one, one.
I'll count in twenty-eight cents a month, cover two, two properties.
So if we go at two, we're at twelve, then the next is thirteen, that's two years, three is fourteen, four is fifteen. Two, one, yeah, is that right? Yeah, so that's fifteen at the fourth year, and we'll be paying fifteen ninety, and then the next year, sixteen seventy.
So we will be going back to paying, year five, we'll be paying a buck?
Buck seventy.
Yeah, not quite, but yeah, around a little over a buck. But it's gonna be a gradual increase, and then, at that point, my thing is there, if you have, if, if you have to raise it up, you have to raise it up. But I just, I'm just not a fan of forty percent, but, you know...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, it doesn't...
But that's the only way you're ever gonna catch up with it, is that, at some point, you're gonna have to just...
Mic the bullet, that's all there is to it.
Mic the bullet and be done with it.
Do you think of all the expenses the town pays, the...
You cash that pop bottles, if you, if you work at it, and then make them pay your service.
How do you know? It used to let you, that's what me and my cousin used to do.
What's that?
Drop around on a bike, stick in a box. We're just gonna need to keep pace with and keep raising.
Well, but do we want to do that? That's... I, I don't know, I just, that seems tacky to me.
If we do the, the four dollar, we still fall behind later, don't we?
No, the, two years from now, you raise it up again, you have an obligation to keep that up with the cost of that, whether people like it or not.
So that's, I think that's, I think we'll have to do something like that, where we're just doing it, and then, then do it again later, and I mean, we're just eating too much coal.
Well, if we, if we raise it four, if...
Then it doesn't have to go up.
Four years, we're only eating two seventy a household.
Yeah, so then we would raise it again, what?
And the other way that I'd brought up, in four years, we're gonna be eating a dollar seventy.
Pretty much every year after that, just keep raising it a dollar, you'll be maintaining, but it is what it is. If they're raising, if they're raising the rate, you get a whole suit.
Yeah, like I said, this is the best contract.
Yeah.
But yeah, it is time for an increase, I mean, how long has it been since, uh, we've just charged ten dollars? I know twenty-five years ago, it didn't cost you anything for trash in Greens Fork, Indiana.
What?
But we didn't have a sewer plant twenty-five years ago.
Right, that's what changed everything.
Well, when we first started, we charged seven dollars a month. Well, when we first started, you charged seven dollars and forty-two cents.
Yeah, they'll say seven dollars, about seven dollars when I started here.
Seven forty-two.
And I think that's what was costing us, wasn't it?
Hmm, it was costing us a little bit more than that, yeah.
Yeah, they've, they've always lost money on that.
When you first got here was.
No, when you tried.
When they trash met.
It didn't come along till in the teens, maybe fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, I don't know.
Because if you do the sewer, you have to have a rate study, and that rate study is gonna cost you about ten grand.
At least five probably.
It was five grand last time, wasn't it?
Thirty-five hundred, ten years ago.
Yeah, I bet you it's double that now.
Well, it took us a year to see.
A little, yeah, a little over a year actually, to get the money thirty-five hundred back from the raise.
We haven't really had any quotes from Doug and Darlene on, are we at a point that town needs to raise its zero rates also?
Because like he said, it takes over a year, time you pay the consultant, and we're skimming by.
But I mean, I'd like to hear Doug's comment and Darlene's comment on how are we doing out there? Are we collecting enough money to?
They don't know what we're collecting.
Are we collecting enough money to handle the sewer?
We pay fifty-one thousand, four hundred and some dollars a year, and we have that, we have to have that a whole amount backed up, plus we have to be drawing or getting, what is it, four thousand some dollars a month?
Forty-two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ten cents a month.
Month that we have to put into that account.
We put in that account to pay, and we're being.
And that's where this right here comes from. Rural Development, that's who we borrowed the money from. And what do we hold? Over six hundred thousand still on that loan that we've been paying on for twenty years.
Six hundred and sixty-one thousand.
Yeah, close to seven hundred.
And we've been paying on it for twenty years, uh, at four point five percent interest. And we tried, when the interest rate got down, to see if they would entertain refinancing at the lower rate.
I'll show you the.
They said no.
Yeah, kind of sat right down there and said, what we're working through.
That's right, that's what he said.
Yeah.
Well, however you guys vote it, I, I don't care. We just are in a position where we're gonna have to raise it.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
So.
But we wanted to, evidently, we was going, wanted to decide that today, so we'll.
Your net income. That means that you made that much more.
That didn't get carried out.
Didn't.
So you're okay. It's not really too bad. You're not going in the hole.
That's only because she goes after all the sewer liens like a rabid dog. Right.
My gosh.
So you, you profited a rep, not over thirty-two hun- thousand of what you paid out.
From the sewer?
Mm-hmm.
Ooh, don't say that out loud. Don't say that out loud.
So your sewer's not really all that bad, as long as you don't have any major.
That's what I was gonna say. It takes one, it just takes one catastrophe.
One pump, ten grand, bam.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, but, I mean, uh, and I, and again, I'll say it, uh, we have to, uh, give Doug a little praise over that, because he's, he's keeping that best as he can.
I mean, I, my thought on Doug is too, if there's a great expenditure coming up, they need to come in here and let us know what's left.
They would, but see, and the bad thing about that, you may not know about it until it happens.
I know.
But that's the risk you gotta run with everything. And I guess worst case scenario, if, if you did have a catastrophe, uh, let's just say a fifty thousand dollar bill to pay, you'd have to go get a loan back.
This is your, this is your payment on your loan, and your interest was twenty-eight.
On one of them. We're paying more interest on each one of them than we are.
Yeah, you're paying more in the interest. It was twenty-eight. I got it backwards. And these are your accounts.
And we're still paying more interest per month on each loan than we are to the.
That's just where, the same way as a home, a home loan.
And this, we've been paying over twenty years.
This is what you're paying interest.
Oh.
It eventually reverses itself. We're getting more on the.
One these days.
I'm gonna say twenty-one or twenty-two actually, because it was, we'd already started paying when I came on the board.
One of them was taken out in oh-three, one of them was oh-four, one, it, or was it oh-four and oh-five? I can't remember.
We just report on both of them.
Yeah, I know, but when they took them out.
What year, year seven, three and four?
I think it was three and four, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's twenty-one years.
So right now, everybody's paying the ten, right?
Yes. And again, no matter how we do it, it's gonna be rough.
Yeah.
So nobody has seconded Kathy's motion then?
Yep. So somebody else needs to make another motion?
So we don't write your motion down, or just?
I don't know how you do that.
You could always say a motion was made, it just wasn't seconded.
No, no second.
I mean, it's just a record of, of, before happening at the meeting.
I'm just trying to figure out how much they're going up each time.
Five percent.
Yeah. Because I want us to close the gap, but.
Just subtract the next year from the other year, and that'll tell you what's, each year's going up.
He was a math student.
Yeah, buddy.
I think no matter what we do, we're gonna have to have at least a dollar increase per year, and try to close the gap after this, whatever we do with this one.
And do we wanna stretch it out that far? So you're talking raising it every year?
Yeah.
Well, if you get it where it should be now, then raise it every year, you'd be better off.
Two, two, and four. There's, that's a five dollar raise in three years. Where's that put us in three years? What are we paying in the next three years?
We're doing fourteen, year one, fourteen forty-two in year two, fifteen fourteen in year three, fifteen ninety in year four, and then sixteen seventy in year five.
Okay, so year three, we would only be eating fourteen cents per unit if we go two, two, one. And then we could wait two, three, four years and raise it again, because once that's over, we'll have another new contract.
Yeah. So you wanna do it that way?
It's fine with me.
Looking for motions, aren't we? So we say two, two, one?
If you down three, what percent would that be, buddy?
What is it?
If you down three dollars.
Three dollars?
What percent if you down thirty-three percent?
Be thirty percent?
Yeah, thirty-some.
Thirty-three percent. Thirty-three and a third percent, actually.
That would be bad.
Three, two, one?
Be bad.
Yeah. I just, I wanna close the gap, is, and I guess, I don't really wanna do it all at one time on them, but I just, I mean, I know it's not that much to like, I don't feel like it's that much, but I know some people think it is. It's percentage wise, it is. But.
Three, two, or two, two, one? And the three, like Buddy said, is thirty percent, and the two would be?
Twenty percent.
What do you guys like?
I don't care.
I like a, I like a motion.
I made the first motion. It's somebody else's turn.
Okay. I'll make a motion, we go two, two, one.
I will second that.
Close the gap.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, to raise the trash. Two dollars this year, two dollars next year, year three, one dollar. So my question is four and five, we'll just wait till four and five and see what happens, or? We don't have to make that a five year thing.
We don't have to raise it at that point. We can wait another three or four years and then do a raise again.
Get a new contract.
I agree with that. Okay, motion been made, properly seconded, to raise the, uh, rates two dollars this year, two dollars next year, and one dollar the following year three.
Yes, I did.
Kath, Kath said, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed say the same. I hesitated.
I wondered what you were gonna do.
Well, I was, you know, when I, I did earlier, yeah. Next box today, that's not too bad. Okay, that's.
Well, and again.
That's fair, decent.
After the third year, we'll only be eating fourteen cents, ninety cents, a dollar.
Something.
Eighty. A dollar eighty.
Dollar seventy.
When, when does it take effect?
So this.
It will take effect.
That's what I'm gonna ask.
In the next building, is that when you wanna take effect?
Which, uh.
Whatever's gonna be convenient for you to build a, to make the changes and stuff.
You gotta go in and change it, yeah.
You want, I mean, you want, you wanna post something or anything for like a month or something, at least give them heads up?
Oh, yeah, we'll post something, or we always post it on the door in the post office. Uh, and I think, you know, it wouldn't hurt if, uh, the diner would allow us to put something in there, and even at the AMVets, where towns members may go. That way, the more people that have the opportunity to see it, maybe the more people will read it, and more people will complain.
Put it on growing up Greens Fork.
You wanted it first in May, didn't you?
But?
Yeah, when do you want it to commence? First of May, first of April? It'd be hard to do first of April.
Yeah, first of May's fine. That way you've got enough time to actually get everything changed over, because.
So every.
Rush otherwise.
Was it going two, one, one?
Two, two, one.
Two, two, one.
So, uh, each year on one May is when the increase will occur, correct? Okay.
Sounds very good to me, and there's not really much choice.
All you gotta do is put out there how much they charge, how much people were paying, with simple math, if they can't, if they're gonna be angry about that, they all be blessed that they had all these years paying less than what it was really anyways.
And you're free for all those years too.
They're still, they'll still be getting it cheaper than, than it's cost.
If they went to get it themselves, they would be shocked.
They had that option. They can go get it somewhere else, and then they won't pick it up.
No, they can't.
No.
No, they don't have that option.
They don't have that option.
Maybe you do a car thing, but you don't agree for it.
But if you live outside the city limits, it costs you.
Yeah, they can do that. They can move outside.
Ninety-nine dollars for three months, and you paid it in advance, or they didn't stop.
Uh, no, has that been rectified with the advanced payment with Bestway then?
I'm sorry?
On the trash pickup? I saw something on here about the disposal costs and stuff?
Yeah, you gotta pay within that month, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, so it was a biggie.
The way they bill it was different, and they kinda caught us off guard.
Yeah, yeah.
But we've got that all figured out, and it's okay.
Yeah, I did.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that was already taken care of.
Resolution was made by Mr. Jensen for us, and. For her, for cart treasurer to pay for that.
Okay.
That really, uh, made a whole really budget.
We have no citizens, parents appearing, so, okay. Enter local agreement with Wayne County Commissioners for building permits. I'll know more, more about that tomorrow when Mr. Soros, Soros.
Sora.
Sora?
Yeah.
Sora comes at one thirty.
S O R A H.
Storm drains, unfinished business. Storm drains at Maple Street. The weather's cleared up. I'd like to think that that's gonna be starting working, taking care of that.
Wade said he was gonna call and say to get, when they could get hot mix.
Hot mix?
Yeah.
It should be, they should be doing it by now, but who knows?
Well, he said that.
Because we get ours over there in Milton.
I think so.
Yeah, I know, sir.
Okay. Yeah, so he's, he's gonna call and see when they're gonna have the hot mix. He didn't think they had it in March, but he thinks April they might.
Because job, like that job out there, I don't think it's gonna, uh, be nothing like paving a whole road, or just doing the storm drain, but.
Yeah.
And hopefully, hopefully we can get some paving done this year, we'll just have to wait and see. So, storm drains. Police report, Officer Bush.
Let me see. So, uh, y'all know by now that the county, county police frequency is encrypted now. So it's, uh, it's all switched over and, uh, everybody's connected. You guys know about the two dogs that we had, we found?
Never found out that the owners were.
No, they found out the owner.
Rip, took them in. And where did you take them to?
The Help Center, Help, the Help Animal Shelter.
West Side?
Yeah.
They had openings.
Well, they made it, so it, there's like one or two kennels open, but it's, it's just so funny, because it was all quiet back in the back, and as soon as you walked in, two dogs back there, it was like a prison movie, everybody just screaming, it was, it was insane.
Making their milk.
Yeah, yeah, the dogs were going crazy. I'm going, man, so, but, uh, the, uh, County, uh, Animal, um, um, uh, Animal Control, she was very, very helpful in getting that done. Springtime's almost here, or is here. I'm gonna get a leaf blower and clean out that, the kennel. It's got leaves and stuff in it, and it's gonna have to be cleaned out, probably hosed out.
We have a street crew that should, should be doing that.
That needs to be pressure washed.
Yeah.
We have a pressure washer, so.
Or not, and then if he could do it, that'd be great, but.
Not him, his department.
His street crew.
Right, yeah.
All we have to do is put that on the list to tell him to do it.
Yeah, if they get done this spring, that'd be great, and that way it's ready for the next dog that we have to find, but yeah. Them, them one dogs, they were, had it ate very well, looks like, so it looked like people were beating them four or five times a day when they were here, and they were, and it was letting go. Yeah, yeah.
Pooping left and right.
But they, but they, they were, they were, they were brothers. You could tell they were brothers, and they were just, they were real good dogs.
So we need to put that on the list to let the street crew know?
And I changed, changed the combination, so I'll give it to Doug.
I know what it is.
Yeah. So, uh, Ron and I attended the twenty twenty-five IDEA conference in Indianapolis. That's where we get most of our training done for the year. We get as far as, uh, the stuff that's mandated, so we got that done.
How many hour, hours did you get out of that for?
Twenty.
Twenty?
Yeah. Uh, had some training a couple of days ago on, it's called the shatter ball.
There we go. Is it like a bolo rap, but it's a ball?
I got it, and I'll show it to you.
I, that was my next question. I don't know what this is.
I don't know what that is.
Huh?
I don't know if that one hits either.
So, if you guys have seen, these newer windows are like tempered, reinforced, where you gotta, you can hit them with a sludge hammer, and it, it takes a lot to get them out, to get them out. This is what they've come up with, and pass it around, show it.
You throw it at the window?
Lady just throw it like a dart, and it will bu, uh, Ron's got a video, he'll show you.
Sorry, throw that to the door.
No, you, it'll break.
Are they very heavy? You're kidding me? What, what is, what's?
It's the point, the point on it, all that energy behind that point.
He's not saying what either. Wow.
Yeah, it just, literally, you just, you just, hey, I'll show, show it to you, just you wanna see it.
So you don't even have to throw it at our.
No, 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 you just, boom, just like a dart.
Did you feel that?
I know. It's, it's counter, it's counterbalanced or something.
All them points are different angles, so no matter how it hits, you're gonna get a point.
I have the camera zoom in on that.
Unless you by some chance get the backside, which is unlikely.
Yeah, if you want to zoom.
So I took my spring loaded punch to that same window, and tried to pop it three times, and it wouldn't break it.
They give you the money back on your part.
He tapped that thing. Well, it's because of the newer laminated windows.
Show.
I did.
I've shown cameraman that.
Oh, yeah, show him that video real quick. They're hard to break.
That's, wow, that's impressive. I've never seen that before.
Always remember, buddy, that Greens Fork leads in technology.
If I was riding my motor truck again, I'd walk away just.
Instead of having a ball green hammer?
Yeah. Well, I used to drop, uh, people, some people used to drop like, uh, steelies, metal, metal ball, somebody, Terry Gacy just. metal, metal ball, somebody, Terry Gacy just kinda.
So.
There might have been a guy, uh, used to just throw a spit cup, dip out the window.
How long has that been available?
Uh, they're barely new.
It came out last, we seen them last year advertised.
Wayne County Officer Hasn't Seen One, I'd say they're pretty new.
Uh, tech electronic is still waiting for state approval on the new radio for the charter, remember we ordered him last year for grant, so. Uh, he got the radio in back in November, but we've been waiting for state approval for that radio, cause it's so new. The model is so new that, uh, still waiting for state.
State approval, what exactly, what does that mean, state approval for us to use it?
Yeah, on the eight hundred towers, the IPSEC system. So, soon as they get that approved, which it, it should be by the end of this month, but like I said, it's, it was, it was the brand new model that was coming out. That's why it didn't come out till November, and that's when we got it, and we're just waiting for state to, yeah, you know how the state wants to give their blessing, so it's just. And then, uh, this happened in March, not, not necessarily in February, but there was a, uh, Ben got into a vehicle pursuit. Uh, there was a burglary in progress on State Road thirty-eight. Call went out.
Just two weeks ago.
About a week ago.
On a Tuesday.
Yeah, and, uh, so Ben started, Ben, Ben got the car, started following around, it was, it was a Lexus SUV pulling a trailer. There's Minneapolis, just so you know, so they came, they came to Minneapolis to go a little shopping in Wayne County and then it didn't work out for them.
You say.
They just had prices.
Where on thirty-eight was it?
It's somewhere west of here, by fifty-three hundred block.
This is west.
Fifty-three hundred.
But it'd be, it'd be east of here though, cause it's getting larger going west, so it's gonna be east of here, it'd be fifty-three hundred blocks, so I don't know whose house that was.
And they were robbing that house?
Yeah, they were, they were burglarizing it, throwing all this shit in the trailer. So, uh, you know, Ben's following and calling it out and then they head towards seventy, get on seventy, uh, Centerville hit, is already there at seventy. So, you know, obviously hit the Crown Vic, ate the best, best police pursuit vehicle out there, you know, trying to catch up with anything, but. Ben held his own, uh, uh, Centerville took the lead, got on seventy and they actually started two grass fires. Cause it was, the trailer was dragging.
The trailer?
Tire, tire was flat, it was dragging sparks going down, just like you see on TV, sparks flying out, started two different fires on the interstate. Yeah, so that was kinda wild, and then, uh, they wrecked out in the middle of the, of the, uh, medium, Centerville was behind him and then Ben was behind Centerville and got him out, uh, uh, Centerville, uh, got, got him out gunpoint, they, they tried to run across the interstate, they didn't get very far.
So who was the first one to witness this, Ben?
Witnessed a car, so the call came out.
The call came out that there was a robbery in progress.
Well, yeah, burglary. Again, I guess the homeowner was behind the guy trying to.
He was chasing me too.
Chasing me too, so Ben caught up to him and then it, it was on and I, I, I do got a, I do got a. Hold on a second, I got a nice video of that.
Our fire department went through.
Oh, yeah, the body cam. Well, you gotta be real careful with looking at body cam videos at our town board meeting, don't we?
So, uh.
Now, this is just on his phone here. Yeah, Greensport Fire Department, he did it up there.
Yeah, several fire departments go in there, cause it was, so you hear the fire started.
I don't know.
I don't know whose house it was.
I wonder whose house it was.
Oh, yeah, we don't know which house, he said he didn't know.
I don't remember off the top of my head.
Now, this is from Centerville's car. Yeah, they had it wrecked out.
That's from Centerville?
Yeah. Yeah.
You might wanna mute that a bit.
Don't give it, it is what it is, he said what he says.
It's on, yeah, it's on television.
Couple bodies, I don't know.
Yeah, so. They ran across the interstate and then they stopped by the fence, they couldn't go any farther.
Is that Ben with his gun pulled?
No, that's Centerville.
Ron, I'll see who's out there, which please.
But, you know, it was, uh.
A hairy.
It was just good having somebody in the center of the county.
Is that Brenda?
Uh, sir, um, uh, it, it just porch that, that, that Ben had to be on duty that night, like I said, it, you know, it's just luck of the draw that he was out at that time and only about a mile or so away, a couple miles away. But it really, words are wise, don't come to Minneapolis, come out to Greensport to shop.
And, uh, we wanna wrap the Crown Vic black with a number three on both doors.
So that, that was, that was, that was pretty much, pretty much the highlights.
And at the police department's convenience, wanna think about, uh, the vehicles that are not working and parked.
Start tagging them? All right.
When it's warm and when you guys are up to it and when you have the time.
And if we got the time, then that, cause then we got somebody with a tow truck, we can call anytime now.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah, Brian's got a tow truck service, so we don't gotta, we don't gotta figure out if someone's gonna pick it up or not.
We don't have to, uh, do any rotation or anything like that, we can just get whoever, whatever, wherever.
So, but, uh, yeah, I'll let the guys know, start.
Like I said, when it's, when it's convenient for the police department.
We shall do it.
Before it gets, you know, out of hand.
So, what do you say, you had in here?
Um, abandoned vehicles or vehicles that are not running or inflated.
Don't want their junk and people not doing anything with it.
Okay, we got a motion?
I make a motion, we accept the police department, well, I forgot, does anybody have any questions they wanna ask, or?
No.
Okay. I make a motion, we accept the police.
Motion been made and properly seconded to, uh, accept Rich, Rich's report for, uh, February and a little bit of March. All in favor say aye.
Right.
I'll, I'll, if I say aye, all right, all opposed say aye. Carried, motion carried.
Yes, carry.
Sewer plant operations report, Darlene Drewley, wastewater superintendent. Hi, Brenda.
Brenda, 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 Brenda.
Collected money out there.
Hey. You collected money out there?
Man.
Let's split it, is it cash?
No. No, uh-uh, no way.
Wastewater Street Plant Muffler Report.
You won't put them batteries in?
Already did.
Facilities Coordinator Report, Doug Wheeler. Do you know of anything, uh, pending or anything?
They did, they gravelled there on Maple Street, uh, it got real deep. Cause they couldn't pay yet. I didn't ask them to, so other people were unhappy about it, but it wasn't bothering me, which is like an upside, upside ground.
It's growing on. Uh, I spoke with Bob this evening, I told him that, uh, I would be over here with Mr. Sora, Sora? Sora. Sora tomorrow at one thirty, he can't make it, he's got a doctor's appointment Monday at two. He said that he was gonna be having his, uh, daughter help him, uh, get a bill ready for Brenda and I said she'll be ready to pay when everything's done.
You need to get him paid.
Well, he needs to finish his job before he can get any paid.
I'm just saying, we're getting into.
Oh, yeah.
We need to pay him, so it's not lingering.
Are you still gonna be here one thirty tomorrow?
Yeah.
Or the log can, okay.
Yeah, it wasn't me that made the appointment, it was Sora, so I'm not gonna ask him to. They, they all have worked with Bob before.
Oh, that's right, you're all phone for it.
Yeah. Sewer utility monthly income and disbursement, Nita Moore, billing for.
In, uh, February, we took in fourteen thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars.
You mean January?
No, in February.
No, February.
In February, we took in fourteen thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Oh, I said, okay, I read it wrong.
But we disbursed eighteen thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. I mean, this can happen, I mean, we can end, we can end up spending when we're taking in, we've taken in twenty-nine thousand, but we've also spent thirty-five, so.
Cause the overdue, overdue sewage just about brings it up to even. Right? Close.
Close, oh, close, yeah, uh-huh. Yeah, and trash overdue is eighteen hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, first of February, we had eight, eight counts, accounts that was in the. The Cart Treasurer recorded three new sewer lanes in February. And at this time, there's twenty-five outstanding sewer lanes yet to be paved due to Wayne County Treasurer's Department. People, if we didn't stay on those leads, we'd be in hold.
Yeah.
It's a lot of work, but it's a necessary thing to stay on top of them.
People would just pay their bills.
We just don't have any way to.
Ding them port. And, uh, we're just lucky that we did take in a little bit more last year than what we spent.
And hopefully the same thing happened this year.
Yeah, it could turn around.
Yet to be seen.
That's true, that's true, yeah.
Anybody got anything else for Ms. Nita?
Nope.
Uh, do you know anything about? I was looking at the county train, the street report, they said something about jetted frozen lines inside a tank at sewer plant, do you have anything about that?
Well, it froze up out there and they had to go jet them, yeah.
So this is a good, there's nothing?
I'm sorry?
None of the lines busted or anything?
No.
Okay.
It was inside of the tank and they had to jet them, yeah.
And Wayne's not back yet?
Yeah, he's back now, but he went back in February, but he's back now, he came back first of March.
Doug, nor Wayne had any hours in February.
No, and.
Which meant spending was down.
Yeah, I was good, yeah.
They didn't fix anything broken.
Yeah, and Rick didn't have many hours either.
No, he didn't have very many.
He was on vacation too.
Yeah, he was gone, he did, made a delivery and him and his wife both delivered.
He didn't make it back in time to plow some snow for us.
Yeah, we got lucky there, I think.
We got lucky, he plowed on Sunday.
Yeah, we got really lucky.
Yeah, he come back.
We got luckier, he didn't break nothing.
He come back and plowed snow for us on Sunday.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we accept Nita's sewer utility monthly income and disbursement report.
I make a motion, yes, I'll second that.
Most have been.
I'm tired.
Most have been made and seconded to accept the report from Nita, all in favor say aye. All right, all opposed say the same. Thank you, motion carried. Now, street report, Wayne Weaver and Rick Shepherd.
Not much there.
Yeah, there's not much there, most of them are off and looks like he did get back in time like we said to plow, so that was good. I guess there was some frozen lines at the sewer plant they had to take care of.
Yeah.
Yeah. Other than that, it was mostly just salt and snow.
Yep. So we just need to extend to them the patch when you can and.
Yeah. Yeah, jetted lines inside the tank.
There's nothing broken.
I'm trying to think if you jetted the lines inside the tank, were, were they, what lines were they, did that drain the tank to jet the lines? I'm just curious, I'll ask Doug or somebody.
You ask Doug.
I will. Brush up, brush up snow to curb in town, salt where needed. Brush up snow to curb in town.
That's what he wrote on.
I'm not sure.
He pushed it up to the curb, the snow.
He just cleaned the street, I think.
Okay. All right.
Oh, he took out the snow, that's what he worth it.
Looking for a ma, a, a motion for the street report?
I make a motion, we accept the street report.
I'm, I'll second it, motion been made and properly seconded to accept the police, uh, street report, all in favor say aye. All right, aye, all opposed say the same.
Who's seconded?
Ben.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry. Motion carried, thank you. Sewer utility year end report.
That's probably Janice.
Oh, isn't that me?
It, it's just the annual report, um.
Does this show some? Negative reparenting.
Right.
Would that be on the last page? And I'll sign it on the green one, but, uh. So anywhere.
Do you need a, a report to look at?
No, I'm just curious, I didn't know, maybe on here somewhere it said took in, put out.
It does. Thank you, keep going.
Oh, this is our payment, probably still owe, we still owe six hundred and sixty-one thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars on the sewer.
After over twenty years.
Yeah. Closer to about twenty-two years.
Yeah, I was gonna say, cause when we came twenty years ago, it was until over.
We're never.
Right at it.
There we go. Oh, this shows our insurance coverages and, uh. Sewer utility year to date, the hundred and sixty-seven thousand, is that what we took in? Permits sixteen.
Yeah, it was a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, uh, some odd dollars, that's what you took in and then you paid out. Um, one, I can't remember, it's, it's on that pa, on that sheet, if you want.
Same page?
Yeah.
So, total operating expense, hundred and fifty-one thousand twenty-six dollars, so there was about eighteen thousand dollars you ever take. That's a shocker.
So it's carries right now.
Am I appropriate? Am I the appropriate? And we don't need a motion or anything on this, we just.
Yeah, you do need.
You would need a motion? All right, but am I to look at it and I'll make that motion after they look at it? Sherry went over. Who signs on pink? Oh.
The pink is for Brenda.
Didn't have blues?
I did have.
Could've been pink for Brenda and blue for Buddy.
She would be green.
Can match our green, parents.
Yeah. She's got them in her hand. I heard her digging them out. I think they're empty.
I paid all the electric bills online. So, I put in here. What I paid, and I feel just initial, and that way, and they're proving them when they.
Oh, you are right now, yeah, Sherry went over. Who's the yellow?
Um, I had a question.
I'll have to.
I'll have to.
Have you heard what I said?
Think there was.
I paid the electric bills all online and there's a page in there, and that's why I did the add tape at the top, but if you'll just initial the page that you looked at the electric bills and then just sign them like normal, if you pass them.
I'll make a motion, we accept the year end sewer report from Janice, I'll second that. Motion been made and properly seconded to accept the, uh, year end report from, sewer report from Janice, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say the same. Aye, all opposed say the same. Motion carried, thank you. It's funny enough to see. A name or two going there.
Who signs the yellow? Who signs the yellow?
You need to sign it.
Uh, Wayne Weaver, yeah.
Who signs the yellow?
I think.
That's something I need to ask you about.
You got on me with that.
Oh, okay. I have to put the amount of your sewer on there and I couldn't remember what it was. It's funny how, well, we got along with it, Wayne gone.
If you wanted another.
Mm-hmm, sure does.
And there was two week period there with nobody, and we still got along. Sometimes there are just dead times where the, the weather's not gonna let you do anything and there's nothing that it doesn't have to be done and, uh.
Stuff that doesn't need to be done.
Yeah, maybe we need to look at that and give a little not paid vacation when we know there's nothing needs to be done.
Unless it be an emergency.
Right.
I think we got lucky, I think there's something probably always out there, I mean, how often do we get by a whole month without something breaking in the sewer?
Right. Not too often.
Yeah.
I don't think, uh, that's used to.
Somebody needing a, telling us that we need to cut a tree or string up something.
Looks like one of them got back in time to plow.
Yeah. Well, Doug would've done it, yeah.
Yeah.
Doug would've done it.
He already does too much.
Yeah.
This is the total on the back and there's a place that we have to initial on the back sheet.
The total's on the ad tape, just, that's just an FYI for you, the, what the actual warrants are, what's printed in that smaller amount.
I got you.
I just wanted you to know what the electric bills were.
You did what?
She paid Duke on, you paid Duke online, right?
Yes, I did.
It's the only way I ever pay now.
I gave up if I joined us.
Huh?
They were paying in Bedford and it just started being.
They don't want them so much easier.
And they're all.
I went back, I went the budget billing though.
They're jacking me.
Just cause they're.
Oh my god, buddy, I left your bills, almost five hundred dollars a month. It's terrible.
You gonna make a motion?
No, I'm gonna let somebody else do it. Or I got your video.
I can't make it, I haven't seen a second one.
I'll make a motion that we approve the payroll check register, uh, records eighty-nine oh one through ten ten.
I made a motion, we approve the warrants.
I know, I read right on it, don't say war, you say warrant on there.
Those are warrants.
Yeah, but this is different from that.
But they're still warrants, when she pays out is warrants.
It's, it's not a payroll check register?
What's the payroll check register, did I give you the wrong one?
Um, let me scratch this out, warrant, W-B-E-A. Here's the last one looking at, you're gonna make the motion, let's go.
I make a motion to approve the warrants.
I'll second that motion. Motion's been made to accept the warrants and properly second it, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say the same. Motion carried, thank you. Now, I'll sign it.
Is anyone do it before I get to look at it?
Today's thirteenth, right?
Correct.
I hope so, I just copied what she had. I just mostly worry for what day of the week it is.
How's the little one Scott?
She is, she, uh, handled it a lot better than I did.
Oh, the flu?
Yeah, she had to.
You're kidding?
Yeah, we all ended up with it. But they didn't have to get put on the tamiflu or anything. I, I was, I'm gonna stuck on that.
Did you have vomiting and diarrhea, fever?
No.
Just yucky feeling?
No, it just was, it affected lungs. I guess that stream really goes after lungs, I don't know what the D goes after.
My sister's just getting over it and she's been sicker than a dog.
Yeah, I just.
Oh, I was too.
It was just.
Sped on oxygen, all kinds of medicine. She's got the vomiting and the diarrhea to go along with it.
Anybody got anything for anybody? Going once, Brenda, you good?
I think so, I was just gonna mention, we need to try to figure out how to get, uh, Bob squared away so we could get him paid, that's my, my big thought.
Hey, well, I didn't have.
I spoke with him a little bit, he said he only had a few and his daughter was going to, uh, help him get together a bill. I talked to him this evening.
Is he not well all of a sudden, is he bad?
He's, he's not, he's not well, but he told me he needed fifty folders.
Fifty folders?
Maybe he's.
Being files, yeah.
Backup, so I don't think there's that many, I don't think we've had fifty permits in the last five years.
Well, I've got some, use what you need and then I'll get what you need, cause I don't think.
All right, if nobody has anything, I'll make a motion.
Just, uh, is everything set up for the, when we gotta go, the streaming stuff we gotta do?
No, not yet, that's a package July the first.
We got to, uh, end of June to figure all that out.
Yeah.
Go make sure, cause I don't know how long this stuff takes to ship here to be able to use it.
Need to get it done.
I think we're all just take our cell phones, put them on record, put them in front of us.
Doesn't work.
All right, if nobody has anything, I will make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I second it.
Motion's been seconded twice and made during the meeting, all in favor, say aye? Aye, all opposed say the same.
Did you second?